Well, good afternoon, everybody. This is the City of Boston Zoning Board of Appeals Subcommittee Hearing for September 23rd is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with applicable provisions of the Open Meeting Law, including the provisions of an act extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency that was signed by Governor Baker on June 16, 2021. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings that it adopted during the COVID-19 pandemic until April 1st, 2022. This hearing of the board is being held remotely via the WebEx Event Platform. This hearing is also being livestreamed. In order to ensure this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen, and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. As with our in-person meetings, comments in support will be followed by comments in opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. Number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting will be limited by the chair as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project, that is, those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the Raise Your Hand icon in the application via the WebEx Event Platform. To raise your hand, click the Participant Information icon. From there, find your name, and on the lower right-hand side, you should see a hand-raising icon. Click the icon, and your hand will be virtually raised. Click it again, and your hand should go down. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press *3 to raise your hand. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first, and then can provide their comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Fortune reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called, or the meeting host will not know how to call you, calling you at the appropriate time. So I'm going to take a roll call attendance of the board members. Mr. Fortune?
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Good evening, Mr. Robinson.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Good evening. I think we're ready to go. Take it away, Mr. Fortune.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for 5 o'clock hearings? Hearing none. I'll go right to the first case, calling DOA 121-5905, 34 High Street. This is to construct a new two-story addition onto an existing dwelling. The addition will feature a two-level Oriole window. There will be a new deck built into the rear yard, which will cover existing parking spaces. The violation is Article 62, Section 29, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 62, Section 8, the rear yard is insufficient, and Article 62, Section 8, the usable open space is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning to members of the board, Ambassador and the public. My name is Anthony McGinnis. I am the attorney for the owners of the property at 34 High Street, Charlestown, Mass.
Can you tell us about what's being proposed?
I will. The owners are proposing a two-story addition to their property in Charlestown on High Street. Currently, they live in a two-story cottage, which is a small building on that parcel. They've lived in Charlestown since about 2013. Since that time, they have grown to a family with three children. Their children attend Boston Public Schools, and the idea here is to maximize the space on that property so that their children can continue to live there. They can increase their living space and continue to attend public school. As I said, the house is a small, two-story cottage. It's got a very historic facade to it, and the owners plan to keep everything consistent with that historic facade. What they would do is add an addition to the rear of the property. So if you see on the slide that we're on there, it shows the existing. There's really nothing in the back of the property. It's just the two stories, and then it goes out to a yard, a patio, actually, and then two parking spaces currently. So they would add a two-story addition, which would add bedrooms, living space, and then they would take the existing parking spaces and cover that with a deck to meet the outdoor space use. They are not increasing the height whatsoever of the property. They're keeping it at the same height and instead adding an addition to the rear. Again, they are not adding a roof deck, although that was explored. They have stayed away from that. And the idea here is, again, to preserve the character of the building and the neighborhood. At the same time, the buildings around them are typically three- or four-story buildings. So this is a small prop, small house on this property. It's a unique shape to the lot, and it provides some challenges. So they're not exceeding their floor area ratio. The only thing that's the issue here is the setbacks, the open space, and then the parking. So with the parking, there are two existing parking spaces there. They actually will be increased somewhat, the size of those, but those are existing. New projects now, residential projects in Charlestown don't require parking, so we would not be making any change to that. This will allow them to continue to keep cars off the street and keep street parking open while taking two cars off of the street.
Okay. Okay, so just so I'm clear, the violations that are involved are the setbacks, the open space, and the parking. You're actually increasing the parking from two to three?
I'm sorry. The parking spaces will stay as two parking spaces. Just the size will just increase slightly. So the violation was for a maneuverability dimension of the parking. So the parking spaces are still, two spaces will remain.
What are the sizes of the spaces?
The space sizes on the plan there. Let me pull that up.
Well, I'm just curious as to why maneuverability is being involved.
That was cited in the...
If I could, Bob D'Amico spoke on this one, so he might clarify this. So I'll put his comments into the record. His comments for 34 High Street are as follows: "Both spaces are too small and do not meet BTD standards. The curb cut does not align with the parked vehicles." That's Bob D'Amico from BTD.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Robinson, how are the plans?
The plans are good. I do have a couple of questions on this. One is, per the drawings and in the proposed addition, it appears you're covering up two existing windows of the adjacent building in the inset corner. How is that working?
So by right, they're allowed to extend the building to the to the abutting property as far back as it goes. Those windows really shouldn't be there from that abutting property. So what they're doing is by right to extend their current building to the end, the back of that abutting property, as it is a zero lot line.
Well, I'm confused. Why shouldn't those windows be there?
Basically, those windows should never have been put in because they are, as I said, by right, the owners can extend their building to the back of that abutting property. So what obviously happened is they put those windows in. They were not done with the appropriate permitting or by code, but just put in there to try and... I'm not sure why they're put in, but the windows don't actually add anything to that property as they have windows on the backside as well. So it's really in just a narrow space there. And so the proposal by right would be to just extend it back.
What is the space between those windows and the addition?
Zero. They're building, they're literally building over the top of two windows on the side of the building. I guess I'm not sure if that, I mean, I'm not arbitrating building code-related issues. That's not my issue. I just... Are those abutters in support of this project?
They have spoken to the abutters. They're not in opposition, and it's been explained to them what the plans are. The plans have been given to them, and the owners will make the appropriate needed construction to abate any issues with the windows. They'll cover them up for them. They'll support them in any way needed so that there's no cost or damage to their building.
So I guess, Chairman, I guess I have a little bit of a question on this in terms of maybe procedural or not. I don't know. You know, obviously, the BPDA has weighed in on this. They are against this project. And that in itself is obviously a little bit concerning. And then, you know, the fact that there is this window condition with the abutters and the proposed... I don't actually have a problem with the proposed addition from a sort of conceptual. I totally get it. I think it makes sense. It looks beautiful. But I think the concern associated with, you know, the butter covering the entire lot is sort of what the BPDA's concern is because they're building a deck then. I guess I'm just wondering if this is really a subcommittee-level project. I feel like this needs to go to the full board, to be honest.
I was just coming to the same conclusion as I was listening to you. You know, typically, the subcommittee handles projects that are de minimis and uncomplicated. This one has a series of issues that are...
It's complex, and again, like I...
I would tend to agree, Mr. Robinson.
What's that?
I would tend to agree with you.
Okay.
I was going to mention it, but you already did it.
I'll entertain a motion to defer this project to the full board.
I would, you know, like to make that motion, you know, and hopefully, we can do that quickly. I don't know what the requirements are in terms of notification, but I'll leave that up to Mr. Secretary. But I would like to make a motion to defer to the full board.
Yeah, I'll second that motion, Mr. Robinson. Mr. Chair, we're going to try to, we're going to fit this in on the 28th of September, so next Tuesday, and it'll be at 12:30.
Okay. To the applicant, it would help for us to know what the butter thinks about having their windows covered, among other things, so...
Yep, and I do note they have, they've had no objection to the project.
Well, with all due respect, I want to hear it from them and not from the proponent. Okay, so I agree. I agree the motion passes and referred to the full board on the 28th.
Thank you.
On the next case, calling DOA 122-5487-777 East Broadway. This is to pay portions of a side rear yard with permeable pavers and create two off-street parking spaces for 777 East Broadway. With access provided by a side driveway, access by an existing curb cut, we'll widen the curb cut approximately five and a half, five, five and a half feet and remove or modify the existing side bay of access. The violation is Article 68, Section 31, screening and buffering. Article 68, Section 34.6, side yard, certain narrow lots. And Article 68, Section 8, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Mr. Fortune and Mr. Robinson. My name is George Marancy. I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. My clients are the owners and residents of 777 East Broadway, Kyle and Jocelyn Gambon. Mr. Chairman members, this is an application to provide residential, a new residential driveway to access two off-street parking spaces in the rear of the single-family dwelling home by my clients at 777 East Broadway. Two parking spaces will be located entirely in the rear yard. The area for the driveway and for the parking would be created by the application of permeable pavers. In order to provide the driveway access, there would have to be a widening of an existing curb cut on East Broadway. There is currently a curb cut there, which would be widened from a width of 14.3 feet to 15.1 feet, an addition of 5.2 feet.
This is Johnny.
In...
Can you say those numbers again, Mr. Marancy?
Yes, of course.
Yeah, so basically, they're saying, so there's a subcommittee, which, which is what we're at, which is better.
I think, Mr....
Do you see it in the background?
And basically, I guess, BPDA, so the guy that was talking, Eric Robinson, represents...
Can you...
I'm sorry, yeah, I'll mute that.
...under their guise, but we are, and they get to weigh in on these hearings. So he's said, which surprised me, he said, "We're against this," which...
Okay, got it. I'm sorry about that. Thank you. I apologize.
Okay, Mr. Marancy, I'm sorry. Can you repeat the existing...
I certainly will, and that's sort of my worst nightmare if I was speaking about the board hearing after my case was disposed of. So I'm sorry.
I am not seated on Tuesday, so I guess that's, I can't do anything about that, so...
I just unmute.
The, I'm sorry. The existing width is 14.3 feet. The additional width to increase the width of the curb cut would be five feet, 5.2 feet. I'm sorry. I believe Mr. Fortune said 5.5, but it's 5.2 feet. The resulting driveway providing access would be seven and a half feet, 7.5 feet.
Mr. Marice, you are correct. Mr. Marice, you are correct. I'm sorry.
Yep. No, but you are correct about the resulting width of the driveway, Mr. Fortune, which will be 7.5, which is probably what you were looking at. There's an existing residential driveway to the immediate left.
I may not be an engineer, but I can add and subtract. 14.3 is the current width. 5.2 is additional. Doesn't that add up to 19.5?
That's going from the curb, the flares.
The full...
Yeah, the flares. Yeah, the flares, exactly. And that's, that's shown on the, the curb cut site plan, which is on the screen. So I was counting, that includes the flares, or didn't include the flares. I'm sorry. I will point out, I said I represent Kyle and Jocelyn Gambon, who are the owners of the property. Jocelyn is the registered professional engineer, who actually drew the curb cut site plan. So if necessary, I would ask that Jocelyn, who's on the hearing, maybe, you know, under the name of Kyle, I'm not sure. They may both be on the same call.
And let's not make this more complicated than we need to...
No, no, no. I'm sorry. No.
No, no, hang on. So we're starting with an oversized curb cut because typically it's 10 to 12 feet, and this is 14.3. Then you're adding 5.2 to end up with a 19.5-foot curb cut. Flares or not, I don't care. Why does it need to be that wide, and what's the width of the driveway?
Well, what I was saying, Mr. Ehrlich Chairman, is that there's an existing residential driveway to the left, which is why there is already a curb cut. So this is an extension of the existing curb cut by 5.2 feet to accommodate a second residential driveway. There is a seven-foot residential driveway on the left that serves 779 East Broadway, nothing to do with this project. That is an existing curb cut to...
I'm sorry, Mr. Marancy, if I could just let Mr. Chair, Bob D'Amico spoke on this. I don't know if it's beneficial maybe to defer this one to the full board as well, but regarding, I'm going to put it out to the record. Regarding 777 East Broadway, he requested denial for the following reasons. Both spaces are undersized. The driveway is only seven, seven and a half feet in width. A minimum should be 10 feet to allow safe access and egress to the parking area, and maneuverability is insufficient.
Okay, I'm having trouble even understanding the...
Can we go, can, man, who's running the slides? Can you go to the first page on the man, Ambassador? Sorry, with the survey? I just want to, that's, yes, I think that's it. Can you zoom in on that? I don't know if you can. I just want to make sure. I'm trying to make sure I understand this, too. I mean, I looked at this, but... So it looks, so the dimensional characteristics, I think, are a little different than we're used to, to be honest. Because they, the 14.3 is also including the cur, like the, whatever you call it, the granite turn. So it looks like it's more of a, maybe a 10-foot existing curb cut, like as we're traditionally used to, or 11, 10 and a half or something. So, but it's, it's, it's feeding the property to the left? Is that correct?
That's correct. If I could continue, and that's the point I'm trying to make, that there is an existing curb cut, which provides, which was something approved. You know, it's not consequential for determination and the outcome of this appeal, but there's an existing seven-foot residential driveway, which was approved for the property at 779 East Broadway, approved by this board three or four years ago. That residential driveway exists. The curb cut that is there exists. In order to...
Mr. Marancy, we approved the driveway that's seven and a half feet wide?
Seven feet wide, Mr. Ehrlich, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, if you, if you zoom in a little bit more, you'll see the dimensions on here. And I guess I was trying to understand, so for the throat piece, I guess, from once you go on to the, through the sidewalk, is that actually a shared space in there, Mr. Marancy? In terms of, I know they're traversing a property line, but is that how they're seeing this?
So there's a, there's a, there's a single curb cut that would be widened by 5.25 feet. That single curb cut that's currently existing, without the widening to 5.25 feet, currently provides access to the seven-foot residential driveway at 779 East Broadway. With the increased widening of that by 5.2 feet, my clients would have a 7.5-foot-wide residential driveway, providing access to the two parking spaces in the rear, which are admittedly, you know, not both, well, actually, I think they could be eight and a half by 20. There's a, there's a lot of space there. But these aren't required off-street parking spaces. I think if, again, I can't control what the board is looking at, but there is a perpendicular space, which is approximately 20 feet in length by eight and a half feet wide. And then there is a, I'm sorry, a parallel space and a perpendicular space, which is somewhat smaller. The violations here are for...
There we go. There we go. Okay. Whoa, 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 slow down. Don't go, okay. The, the spaces are, well, it's hard to tell from this. Where are the, on this drawing? Are the spaces right at the end of the driveway there, next to the...
Yes. So the indication there is two, you know, two parking spaces. One is parallel to the driveway. There is a, there is a dimension there of 18 feet in length, so it's shorter than that. There's a perpendicular space, which is indicated below that as the board views the plans.
Yeah, okay. We get it now. So you've got, so I, I, it's hard for me to imagine that we approved a seven and a half foot, or seven-foot driveway. I mean, we never approved driveways that are smaller than 10 feet. And now you're asking for another one that's also undersized, abutting one that's currently undersized. I mean, how do you even get a sizable car through a seven-foot driveway?
So we can speak to that. I have to point out, Mr. Ehrlich, that there's no zoning violation, and I realize that Mr. D'Amico has has offered his input on this. The only violations here are for the width of the driveway, which, not for the width of the parking spaces, or the size of the parking spaces, the width of the driveway, which is, as the chair says, undersized at seven and a half feet, which is a half foot wider than the driveway, which was approved on the left, which I realize has no bearing on this.
Yeah, that one baffles me, Mr. Marancy, I have to say. Mr. Robinson, what do you think of these plans?
So, I mean, I think they're not ideal, but I think, based on the condition, I mean, I guess my question a little bit was, well, is this an owner-occupied building?
It is, and Mr. Robinson, Chair...
Is it a single? Is it a single?
Yeah, it's a single, yeah, it's a single family. And it might benefit us all if Jocelyn Gambon were to be unmuted and allowed to speak. Aside from being the property owner, she is the professional engineer and the author of the site plan that we're viewing. So if that could be accomplished, I think it might be helpful, of course.
I'll be honest, I don't, I think it's fine. I mean, I'm okay with it. I've reviewed, I understand it's not traditional, but I think, to me, based on the condition, I mean, I don't know. I don't have a problem with it. And I think it's a minimal adjustment to one side of the curb cut to accommodate two off-street parking. I mean, it's, it's not perfect, but, you know, I think, I don't necessarily have an issue with it in terms of, I mean, I think we can, I can certainly weigh in on it. I mean, but I don't need to hear the proponent. I understand the issue, so...
I actually would like to hear the pro, because a seven-foot driveway is not something... Mr. Marancy says we approved it before on the abutting building. I don't recall in my entire tenure on this board ever approving a driveway that undersized, so I would, I mean, there's some cars that simply wouldn't fit.
Sure.
So I, you know, I'm willing to hear, if the proponent is an engineer, I'm willing to hear what she has to say.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. It's Jocelyn Gambon. I am the homeowner. I can't speak to the property next door and the approval process there, but at seven and a half feet, there are those compact parking spaces that are eight feet wide, which will allow, you know, doors to open and people to get out. So at seven and a half feet to traverse down the driveway without opening up a door would be more than sufficient, in my opinion. And we do have room to maneuver two cars back there. I think one thing that's important to point out, and apologies, George, if you already did, is that the widening of the curb cut does not result in any loss of on-street parking. So we're just widening that curb cut a little bit, and then we can get two cars off the street with no loss of on-street parking. So it really is a benefit to...
What's the possibility of, I mean, I can't quite tell from these drawings, but what's the possibility of having a curb cut split the difference between the two driveways and be smaller and allow access to each driveway on the street?
That would require, I guess, modifications to our abutters configuration. I don't know what the process is for that. If we could adjust the curb cut and center it, I personally have no issue with that. But again, I don't, don't know what the process would be for the neighbor. So we were just trying to minimize any work, you know, that would affect their driveway, obviously, and just impact our side of the property line.
What's, what's between, like, on the property line, sort of as in the drive area, between, like, between your properties? Like, it's hard, I can really see, and I can't tell.
Right, yeah, no. So there would be roughly six inches of grass.
Grass, okay.
So we'd be, we would pay, we would put permeable pavers right up to the property line. The width of the actual pavement on the abutters driveway, you know, it does vary in width, but they left roughly six inches from the property line to the edge of their pavement. Just in my understanding is in case they ever wanted to put a fence, is what we've been told.
I mean, Mr. Ehrlich, I like your thought. I don't know if it's feasible, if, you know, just rework the curb so both could use it and go from there. I mean, if there's a concern about the oversized curb cut, what, do you have a dimension of the actual clear throat width? Because that's kind of, I think, a little bit more traditionally how we think about that. And like, it's not dimension on these drawings, so I don't know exactly.
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't know it offhand. It would roughly be, usually those are two-foot curb stones, though, so you just subtract four feet.
So you might be at 11 feet clear opening between...
Existing, yes, yeah, roughly.
Yeah, okay.
If it's two-foot curb stones on each side, you're actually at 10, at 10.3 feet.
10 feet, sorry. And then, and then, I'm sorry, sorry. I meant the, for the full throat, okay, so 15. I got you. I'm sorry. I see that now. Okay.
All right. Well, how about this? How about we, we entertain a motion that would allow for approval, but with BTD review and with a goal of creating a single curb cut that not exceed the city standard of 10 feet wide?
I'm fine with that. I can make that motion.
Okay, please, go ahead. Okay.
Well, we haven't had testimony, Mr. Ehrlich.
True enough. Thank you. Thank you for that. Is there anybody here who would like to speak on behalf of the proponent?
Hi, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Haley, Dylan, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. The Mayor's Office would like to go and record in support of this proposal. Unlike we stated before, our main, we want to recognize that we did get letters of opposition, but the opposition was just based on losing an off-street, I mean, an on-street parking space. And as it was stated multiple times, no off-street parking is going to be lost. Thank you. And as it was stated multiple times, um, it, no off-street parking is going to be lost, thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, members of the board, Anna Calderon from Councilor Fling's office. The councilor provided an opposition letter to the board this week to, uh, to the zoning release by this, um, applicant regarding this curb cut. As he had heard concerns from neighbors that this proposal would take away parking in the area where parking is limited, we received opposition from some of the butter's neighbors and the City Point Neighborhood Association, who are concerned about this proposed curb cut extension. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have a few raised hands, um, let's start with.
Mr. Chairman, before you go, we do have letters of support, we also have letters of opposition, and the mayor's office had spoken regards to, um, the opposition letters, that's what we have.
Thank you, okay, and I'll start with Eileen Smith, can you hear us? One second, all right, let me just see if that's the same caller, too. Is that you, 617269, is that you, Eileen?
Oh, no, this is Diane Smith.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Smith, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Sure, Diane Smith, 776 East Broadway.
Okay, go ahead.
And, um, my issue may have been addressed, but I'm not sure, uh, because one of the gentlemen recommended a, a single curb cut, not more than 10 feet wide. So, does that mean the total driveway would be 10 feet wide? Because when I went over to measure myself, the entire driveway, including the flashes, was 172 inches, which is 14.33 feet, and if you take out the flashes, that's 10 feet. So are you saying that you're recommending 10 feet?
So we're here giving testimony at this point, um, but we'll, we may be able to.
Okay, well, then, let me just, I'll just add one comment then. I had added, if you added three and a half feet, that would make the, um, driveway 214 inches wide, which would be 17.8 feet. And, um, I guess I was wondering, um, you know, I think the 5.2 inches might be a little too much.
Okay, thank you, um, we will, when we get to our deliberations, we will take that in, uh, all into account. But yes, those are the concerns we were, that we were raising as well, okay, anybody else?
Yep, uh, Luann, go ahead, you've been unmuted.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, good afternoon, Mr. Ehrlich and Board, uh, Luann O'Connor, Six Shepton Paris, South Boston, uh, Chair, City Point Neighborhood Association. So the, um, City Point Neighborhood Association voted to oppose the original proposal for this curb cut um, a while back, I can't remember the year that it was before, um, subcommittee. And the concerns are, in fact, um, the length of that curb cut. So I noticed that, um, BTD weighed in. And I'm wondering, is it possible to have a city official from BTD or perhaps somebody from the board come out and look at these measurements? Because many of us have actually tried to measure them, we're just not coming up with the same thing that, um, the proponents are. So, with the five feet, that would bring that curb cut beyond where their house comes out. So if you bring that house straight out, that curb cut appears to be going beyond that line as well. Um, so there are a lot of questions, I guess, that we still need information on, and I would like to see if that would be a possibility. And the other, the other thing I just wanted to say was that, um, I like the idea if 779 and 777 could work together to make a one curb cut to access both properties.
Yeah, okay, the, uh, again, the only problem is that we can't impose anything on the, uh, abutting, uh, uh, abutting neighbor, but thank you for your testimony, anybody else?
No, sir, that's standard, the question, yeah, um, no, no further raised hands here.
Okay, all right, um, I mean, I think, I think we are, Mr. Robinson, I think we are, uh, where we were, uh, before. And, um, I think the entertaining emotion to, um, try to keep the curb cut to the standard size, uh, and involve BTD review, I think would be useful.
Yeah, I I, I think that's a fair kind of, uh, conclusion. I I I'll make a motion to, um, approve, um, with the proviso, uh, the proponent will work with BTD um, on a resolution of the curb cut that meets city standards for this, um, sort of residential size.
I would second that motion.
Uh, and I am too in support, so, uh, the motion passes with those provisos.
Thank you, Chairman, thank you, members, good night.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 1190195, 683 East 7th Street. This is a change of occupancy from a two-family at 683 East 7th, and convert basement of a single-family residence to a second unit. Violation is Article 68, Section 33, off-street parking and loading requirement. Article 68, Section 7.2, basement units are forbidden. Article 68, Section 8, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 68, Section 8, usable open spaces insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, side yards insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, the rear yards insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, the additional lot areas insufficient. And Article 68, Section 8.3, the dimensional regulations of the location of the main entrance. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, members of the board, my name is Attorney Alexis Kachuk, I'm located at One State Street, Boston, Mass.
Can you, uh, tell us what the proposal is, please?
Sure, uh, this is a fairly modest proposal. It would take an unfinished basement of a single family and convert it into a functional unit. Historically, this house was a multifamily property. Uh, it originally started out as a three-family. For many years, it was a two-family. And approximately 10 years ago, the owner converted it into a single family. The owner now desires, desires to make it back into two functional units. Uh, it is surrounded by multifamily houses on both sides and both sides of the street, and many of the basements, uh, on that street are also functional units.
Okay, um, as, as typically with this board, uh, we don't, don't necessarily have a problem expanding, going, uh, from a single to a two, but our issue about making a basement's livable space depends on the relationship between the floor and the grade, and whether these are largely underground or not. So could you please give us the dimensions of floor to grade? And is there a change in the topography of the lot? Is it, uh, higher at one point, lower at another, um, so just talk, walk us through that.
I don't believe there is a change in the topography of the lot. It is a, it is a brick home where they will be renovating the existing basement. Uh, there will be sprinklers inserted in the construction, and there will be rare egress, uh, which is now currently a bulkhead on the property.
And when, how do you get, okay, but you didn't answer my question. What is the height of the gray, of the floor to the grade, outside grade?
If you could hold on one moment, I'm hoping somebody from our development team can answer to that.
And what is the floor to ceiling height in this basement?
Matt Wells with Tremont Construction, so I'm, um, I'm the builder, um, who has, who had filed the original building permit. Uh, we worked through that appeals process, um, with ISD, um, which granted us the, um, the sprinkler, um, for the, in exchange for the one means of egress. Um, I would have to look at these plans, I don't know offhand, um, but these plans should detail what that height is, uh, according to the grade.
And, and how many forms of egress are there?
One.
Four, I'm sorry, yeah, one.
Mr. Robinson?
Again, this is a one, I I I'm not sure we should be weighing in on, to be honest, because I think it's, again, it's, it's not as simple as, I think, the proponent is sort of advocating, I understand, and the concept it is, but I also see, I I believe, a lot of problems with what's actually be, being proposed from a, it is a studio unit, and there's gas utility closets, water heater closets that are opening directly into the unit, which is not allowed in a multifamily. Those have to be segregated out of the living space, you can't, so I think there's a whole bunch of issues here, to be honest, that are not even just zoning related, so I I would probably recommend, you know, defer to the full board. Um, and I also think there's no dimensional characteristics of how, with the questions you're asking in terms of how high to the, the grade, and so I think we, we need to, to punt this, I think, unfortunately.
Mr. Robinson, I'm not sure if deferral to the board is appropriate. If there are that many problems, maybe it makes more sense to deny without prejudice, and then I'll come back with more answers.
That's fair, I mean, I, I'm, I'm, I was, I'm leaning in that direction, but I hate that people get to this point and we do that, but I think that's probably the right move on this one, um, just because I think there's enough unquestionable sort of conditions that, uh, they're going to get flagged later in, in building code review or something that I don't think will be acceptable. So I think we should, um, I'm, I'm happy to make that motion if.
Well, we need to take testimony first, so, um, is there anyone here to speak on behalf of the proponent?
Um, hi, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Haley, Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services, would like to go on record in support of this proposal. Um, I'm sure the applicant can speak more, but this is a, um, a, a different situation where the families are living together, they just need their own separate space. So I think, um, what you guys talked about with the, um, the things having to be separated from a different unit. Um, again, I don't know all of that, but, um, that it would be a little bit different because they're the same family living under the same place, they just need the same, um, busy different spaces. Um, so with that, no abutters are opposed, but would like to go on record in support, thank you.
Just, just a comment on that, you know, when we make these decisions, we make them for the property and not the particular situation of who happens to be living there at the given moment, because they may not be there, uh, in 10 years. So, uh, we need to think about how the property is going to be, uh, used in the future. So, any, any, but, any other testimony?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Anna Calderon from Councilor Fling's office. The councilor would like to go on record in support, thank you.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, we have two here, oh, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, uh, John, John Walsh, uh, I am, uh, a resident of the, uh, the property and, uh, part of the, uh, family, uh, applying for the, uh, for the variances. Uh, I just wanted to quickly speak to, uh, the comments surrounding the, uh, the meters and, and, uh, the utility boxes, uh, that are currently, uh, shown in the plan. Um, there have already been some discussions with the, with the design team surrounding, uh, consolidating, uh, some of those utility boxes, uh, together in the common area space that is found in the design at the, uh, bottom of the stairs that come from the upstairs unit. Um, so I, I, I apologize, I, I did not, uh, necessarily realize that that would come up as an issue here today, uh, but that is something that we're already pursuing, uh, in terms of a, uh, intended design change, uh, to move those utilities to the, to the.
So here's the, here's the problem, we, we.
Technically accessed by both, uh, by both units.
Okay.
I thought I would speak to that piece particularly, I, I could certainly, uh, elaborate and, and further, uh, in support of the, the proposal overall, but I'll, I'll leave it at that for now.
Okay, um, we, uh, we, uh, only can approve what's in front of us. So it may be extremely well-intentioned, and you may have already, uh, thought about these issues, but the drawings that we have, the project that is in front of us does not include those elements. So, uh, if that's the case, we have a number of administrative options to push the, the, the project back. So you can come in with a set of plans that shows all the elevations and answers the questions I asked about height and grade, and also deals with the issues that Mr. Robinson raised, um, about, uh, uh, about isolating the, uh, utilities from, from the living space. But that's not what, but we don't have those answers now, and we, and we can't act without them. So is there anybody else who wants to testify?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we have one raised hand, Eileen, you've been unmuted, can you state your name and address for the record, please? She may be having connectivity issues, Eileen, we can't hear you, can you hear us? If you want to put your comments in the chat, you can do that as well.
Okay, I, I mean, I think, I think we know where we are, um, can I have a motion, please?
Uh, actually, I think, uh, I'd like to make a motion to defer. Um, I think, I think that there's merit here, I'm not sort of judging on that. I think we just need a little bit more information, um, to make the decision. So, um, I'd make a motion to defer, um, to give the proponent some time to clean up the drawings, make sure we have the information that we talked about in terms of understanding the grade, the height, um, to grade, the windows to, to grade, and then, um, uh, be willing to listen to it at a further date.
I would tend to agree with you, Mr. Robinson, and we'll try to get an October date here, I'm trying to figure out what date is right now.
Great.
Right, and I, and I would, and I would agree as well, I'm not sure that I would, uh, say the, the proposal has merit, I, because I don't know, I don't know, because we don't have enough information, so, but I think all three of us are agreed on the appropriateness of a, of a deferral. So, uh, so, uh, that's, that's the motion, it passes.
It would be October 19th at 12:30.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, can I, second, so, uh, I, I think, and I'm not, not judging here, but, uh, they will need to resubmit plans to ISD, which will need two weeks probably for review. I, I think the date should be further out, but I don't want, I want to make sure we have enough time for ISD to review if they're going to update their plans.
I'll go to counsel on this one, Tom can speak on that.
Yeah, Mr. Robinson, this is Tom.
Yeah.
Depends on, maybe if the applicant thinks they can get their plans in, like, next week, if it's possible, I don't know how long, like.
Okay, so that's fine, so.
Okay, so we'll, we'll stick with that date, all right, next case, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 1008 714215 Nottingham Street. This is to extend living space in the basement and add two-bedroom and bathroom. The violation is Article 65, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Name and address for the record, please. It is Nottingham on. Mr. Gomes?
I didn't check it earlier, so I'm not, um.
Okay, we'll come back to it.
Thank you.
The next case, calling BOA 1206766, 99 Woodrow Avenue. This to confirm occupancy is an existing single-family, extending existing dormer to the right side of the home by five foot eight, and adding a lolly column in the basement. The violation is Article 60, Section 9, side yards insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Melissa King, 99 Woodrow Ave, the Dorchester, Mass. 02124.
Uh, please tell us about, uh, your proposal.
Okay, so, um, we propose to change the two-side roof rafters on the existing dormer on the right side of the home. The existing roof was rotten, so we want to take the opportunity to adjust the roof rafters from six feet to eight feet to make the height suitable for a shower. Uh, we will not change the ridge beam of the existing dormer, meaning we will not change the height of the existing dormer, and we also will not be changing the width of the existing dormer. And I also wanted to note that we have a butter support and support of the Woodrow Ave Neighborhood Association.
Okay, thank you, and what is the purpose of the additional lolly column in the basement?
Um, so I have the contractor here with me, and he can speak to that.
Hi, my name is Lenroy Conanan, contractor. So the lolly column was to strengthen the structure in the basement because it was actually wood beam in there, so we changed it out to make it, um, lolly column. So we upgraded.
Okay, um, how, how are the drawings, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are, are good, it's de minimis, there's, uh, I have no issues with this, thank you.
Okay, um, is there anybody here to speak on, on behalf of the proponent?
I, uh, yes, uh, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, uh, my name is Dante P. We're from the Austin Neighborhood Services, uh, we would like to go on record in support of this proposal. Uh, there was an abutters meeting held on July 14th by the Austin Neighborhood Services, where neighbors and abutters had their questions answered adequately and no major concerns raised. Then the applicant went before the Woodrow Ave Neighborhood Association on July 15th, uh, where support was shown for the proposal. Again, the mayor's office would like to go on record in support of this proposal, as the applicants have been, have received many names of abutters and neighbors in support, on support positions, as well as a letter of support from the Woodrow Ave Neighborhood Association, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, we do have, uh, five signatures, um, five signature pages in support.
Adam Ambassador, anybody else?
Um, no, sir, I have no raised hands at the moment, thank you.
Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, uh, to approve.
I'll second that motion.
An aye to him in support, so the motion passes.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 12287019 Blake Street. This to construct a third-story bedroom addition, the violation is Article 69, Section 23. This is the neighborhood design, Article 69, Section 9, the building has excessive, excessive in stories, and Article 69, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Matt Murphy, 23 Emmonsdale Road, West Roxbury.
Tell us about your, your project.
Okay, I'm the builder here, uh.
Okay, I'm the builder here, um, representing Ramona Silva and her son that live in a side-by-side, uh, two-family. We're proposing a third floor addition to add an identical bedroom on each side.
Through the use of a dormer?
Yeah, front and back shed dorm. Well, it's, it, it's, the gable doesn't go, the, the addition, it's not going to be all the way, uh, side to side, so.
I can see that from the elevation there.
Two-foot step back on each side.
Okay, how many square feet are you adding?
Uh, 10, 1080?
So, I'm sorry.
It's about 510 feet on each, on each side, if include the stairwell and everything gross.
Okay. Uh, so we're, how are the drawings, Mr. Robinson?
Drawings are good and I, and I think it's, it's consistent with the, the neighborhood around. I don't, I don't have any issues with this and her questions.
Okay. Is there anybody here to speak on behalf of the proponent?
Hi, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Danielle Fonseca with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office would like to go on record in support of this proposal. The applicants notified all the Butters and a community meeting was held by our office on Monday, July 19th, where no concerns were raised by community members. The applicant has been a longtime resident of Boston and this neighborhood, and also has a good relationship with their neighbors and community leaders in the area. The applicants have also mentioned, um, that they are looking to just add room for their family. So our office does not believe that this will negatively impact the community and look forward to seeing it move forward. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chair, I have no raised hands at the moment.
Hey, can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
Do you think it needs a design review, Mr. Robinson?
I, I don't think so. I think it's pretty straightforward and. I'm, I'm good with it. It's pretty consistent with the, the neighborhood. I'm okay with it.
Okay, and I to him in support, so the motion passes.
This property is in a overlay district, so this will be, go to the BPDA anyway.
Okay, there you go. Thank you.
Okay.
So.
All right, motion passes with, uh, design review.
Okay.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 121 3068 18 Prescott Street. This to confirm a single-family dwelling, change arc from a single to a two-family dwelling, and legalize the two-family dwelling and extension of living space into the attic. The violation is Article 69, Section 29, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 69, Section 8, two-family dwelling use is forbidden. Article 69, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 69, Section 9, the building height is excessive in stories. And Article 69, Section 9, usable open space is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, this person did not sign, uh, check in as well earlier.
Okay, but we'll come back to it.
Okay.
Go to the next case, calling BOA 118 0850 302 Lamontine Street. This is to demolish the existing front and rear decks and construct new front and rear porches. Replace the existing slate and mansard roof with new slate. Violation is Article 55, Section 9, side yard setback is insufficient. Article 55, Section 9, rear yard is insufficient. Article 55, Section 41, the front model alignment with an existing block. Name and address for the record, please. Looks like I can get my voice worked out today.
Uh, yeah, hi, you hear me?
You do.
Yes.
Okay, uh, this is Beth Worrell. Uh, I'm the architect, 164 Arbor Way, Jamaica Plain. Um, this is a, a single family, uh, actually, oh, go, that's okay. I was just going to suggest that you show the photographs first if you have them. It's kind of a little more explanatory. Um, so just stop there a second. Um, so it's a single family. It's an existing pork chop lot. And, um, the house is crowded a, almost all the way up to the rear, um, property line, which you can see if you go, when you go, we go to the site plan. Um, but I just wanted to walk you through these. So, so this was, um, basically the project that, that's proposed is to remove an existing deck, which you can see in that photograph of the front elevation. Um, literally a deck, not a porch, um, on the front of the building. Uh, and to replace it with an actual roofed porch, um, more consistent with, uh, Jamaica Plain architecture. Uh, the rear, um, also has a, a deck jammed in. I'm quite sure these were not built per, with a permit. Um, and the proposal back there is to demolish the deck and, um, just have a very, uh, small stoop and stairs down, uh, from the back door to an on-grade terrace. So it would actually improve the privacy of the neighbors because right now, you know, they're raised up three feet and look right over the fence on two sides into their, uh, Butters yards.
Um.
Go ahead.
Yeah. On the front is the footprint of the new proposed, uh, roofed porch, the same as the existing deck?
Uh, it is slightly larger if you want to look at the, uh, go to the, the plans at this point. Um.
Two feet.
Yeah.
Two feet larger. It's going from 10 to 12.
It's, it's pretty much, um, the same width as the deck, but, uh, slightly wider because of bringing it out to the edges of the house.
Um, and the, and the rear, uh, you're taking something, um, that's currently fairly large and placing it something smaller?
Yes.
How much, what's the difference?
In.
So if you look at. Dimensions?
Well, if you look at, um, A1, uh, you can see the existing deck is, uh, seven foot eight out into the house. I'm sorry, that doesn't have a, by 12 feet. You can see it's, uh, filling up that whole space. And the proposed stoop is just, uh, three and a half by four and a half feet.
Okay.
It's just fitting it, you know, literally that you can step out on and walk down to the.
Okay, okay. No, I get it. And so, so what are the violations here? The side yard?
There's, uh, rear yard and side yard. The front modal alignment, I think is really irrelevant because it's a, it's a pork chop lot. The house is in the middle of the block. There is no alignment.
Okay. All right, Mr. Robinson, how are the drawings?
Drawings are fine. There's no, no questions. This is pretty simple and straightforward.
Yep. All right. Is anyone here to testify on behalf of the proponent?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, like to go on record in support of this proposal. Uh, the applicant went before the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council Zoning Committee on July 7th, where they were, where they received their support for the proposal, um, through the Butters process, um, conducted by the previous liaison, Lindsay Santana. Uh, no concerns were raised and the mayor's office does not believe this will negatively impact the neighborhood. Thank you.
Yep.
Hi, Mr. Chair, I have no raised hands.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
And I to him in support, the motion passes.
Good luck, thanks.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 120 3875 73 Pershing Road. This is to extend living space to the basement for Unit 1, finishing 632 square feet of unfinished basement space to increase livable area for Unit 1. Project scope to include new access stair from Unit 1, children's playroom, game room, full bath and kitchenette. The violation is Article 55, 69, excessive FAR, I'm sorry, FAR is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Meg O'Brien. I'm an architect on the project representing Bob and Jane Cohen, um, at 73 Pershing Street. Uh, as you stated, it is, uh, an owner-occupied unit. They're just looking for, for some additional square footage for care that they're providing to their two grandkids. So the goal of this project is to just get them kind of their own space. Um, it's 632 square feet of finished basement space. The ceiling height is, uh, 7'4", and I did just check to see, uh, floor to grade were at about five feet. Uh, the existing FAR is, uh, .75 and with this, um, finished basement area, it will go up to, um, .667. So we're just about .07 over FAR.
Um, I, I'm sorry, I didn't hear. What did you say the floor to ceiling height was?
Floor to ceiling, we're at 7'4".
7'4", and this is a, uh, this is a single family, right?
It's a two-family, but this would be for Unit 1, which is owner-occupied.
Okay, uh, my understanding, uh, in the two-family that you, that the minimum floor to ceiling height is seven foot six.
Um, that might be my misunderstanding.
Well, so, how do you correct that understanding?
Um, I suppose we would need to just verify the, um, the floor to ceiling height.
I believe that for a single family, it's seven foot and for a two or three, it's seven foot six.
I'm dropping the blank. I should probably know to Mr. Erlich, but can, I, I'm getting my, my things confused, but, um.
Let me, uh, hang on. I, uh, let me, let me double check. That's, uh.
I thought, I thought it was at seven. There's no, uh. Well, Mr. Erlich's checking now.
No, I'm, I'm, I take it back. I'm wrong. One and two.
Seven in, in one and two, and then you go seven, six, so.
Okay, so you're, you're all set. What is the, uh, what is the egress from this, uh, basement, uh, expanded space?
Um, so the egress is that there are two existing egresses that would be, remain intact.
Can, can we see them on, so let me, let me tell you what, what we are concerned about.
Sure.
We're concerned about, there's a, you're putting a kitchenette in there. And the concern is that at some point, uh, if there's a kitchenette there and there are two means of egress, that it would become a separate unit in and of itself, either to be rented or if it's owned, sold or whatever. Um, uh, and so we have been historically reluctant to include, uh, our kitchens in these, uh, uh, in the, this type of extended living space.
Okay, um, so for, even in a very small scope, the idea behind the kitchenette itself is that, um, Bob and Jane would be providing care to their grandkids in the basement level, um, and that they wouldn't want to be going up and down the stairs all day. So this is just a really small, it's tucked into that bay window. So it would just be like an under counter fridge, a very small sink and, uh, like a small counter space. So I don't think it could pass as like a.
There's no, there's no hooking, right? It's just, it looks like a simple wet bar, okay, more of a wet bar.
And that, and that, that addresses my concern. All right, how are the drawings, Mr. Robinson?
Drawings are good. No questions on it. And I think it's just, uh, looks like an expansion of a single family to the, for, uh, looks pretty straightforward. I don't have any issues with it.
Okay, uh, is, uh, is anyone here to speak on behalf of the proponent?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, like to go on record in support of this proposal. Um, the Mayor's Office at this time is unaware of any concerns from Butters regarding, uh, this modest proposal. Uh, there might be some opposition. They did not have a chance to meet with the, the local neighborhood civic association. Uh, we feel this is a small proposal that will not negatively impact the neighborhood. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chair, I have no raised hands.
Okay, I just note for the record that the BPDA recommends denial without prejudice, but, uh, I'll entertain a motion.
I noticed that as well, but I think based on the location, I, I feel like this is, is sort of a, an expansion of the living space. So I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
And I will, uh, agree, so the motion passes. Uh, good luck.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 121 3674 26 Burtson Avenue. This to confirm occupancy as a single-family addition, a second story and a rear deck of an existing single-story home. Proposed house with three bedrooms, two full baths, a half-bath, floor-open kitchen, dining, living room and access to the basement. The lot is a non-conforming 4,006.8 square feet and the lot size and zoning is 6,000 square feet. The violation is Article 9, Section 1, the reconstruction extension of a non-conforming, non-conforming building and Article 56, Section 8, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Shane O'Neill, 26 Burtson Ave.
Can you tell us what you, uh, what you're proposing?
Um, so I am the, uh, owner occupant. I am, uh, proposing a second-story addition to my current bungalow. Um, it would open up the first floor plan, allow for a, uh, open kitchen, and then the second story, the bedrooms, the two on the first floor would move up to the second story. Um, and then a porch in the front as well as a, a deck in the back.
Okay, um, and, uh, this is a single family?
It's a single family, yes.
Okay, and how does this compare with, uh, uh, the height compared with other, uh, homes in the neighborhood?
Uh, it's in line with the other neighborhood. Most are two-story homes. Uh, this is probably the smallest house on the street, um, and it would still stay under, um, it wouldn't, the direct neighbor would still have the same roof height.
Okay. How are the drawings, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, drawings are good and, and I concur. I think that, you know, there's a mix, but most of them are mainly twos and, uh, I have no questions. This is, uh, looks pretty straightforward to me. Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody here to speak on behalf of the proponent?
Mr. Chair, Secretary, we do have letters of support. And I know the, I live in West Roxbury, I know the area very well. Mr. Robinson's right.
And no, no letters of opposition?
We, we do have someone who's interested in speaking. They should just let me know. Okay, let me message in the chat, um, one second. Peggy, go ahead. You've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address, please, for the record?
Hi, I'm Peggy Hooper. I live at 21 Burtson Ave, almost directly across from the property we're discussing. Um, hi Shane, I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. One is when we had our neighborhood meeting in, uh, June, the question came up about the deck that's been proposed. And I believe it was you and your architect who confirmed verbally that there will not be a deck because it would be too costly. But in any case, no, no, there's no deck. Also brought up at that neighborhood meeting was the, um, the fact that there is no driveway showing on the plans we've seen, which go back well over a year. And, uh, we've been told, again, at that neighborhood meeting, told that there will be a driveway. Um, I heard earlier this evening when you were discussing the Ward 7 house on East 7th, converting the basement to habitable. Uh, one of the leaders of this meeting, I'm sorry, I don't recognize voices, said something to the effect of, we can only rule on what we have in front of us. I think that what's in front of us is a set of plans that do not carefully, accurately match what the proponents, uh, what the owner and his team are hoping to do. And I would like to see a better set up to date plans clarifying the deck because we were told in June, no deck. Now he's, Shane's just said, oh yes, we're going to have a deck. And the driveway and parking have not been addressed at all.
Okay, thank you for your testimony. Mr. Robinson, can you, uh, speak to this?
So there are decks shown, uh, on the drawings, uh, front and rear. Um, so I'm not sure who the, uh, the Butters, i- if they're speaking about the front deck or the rear. Um, and the site plan i- is sort of, I would agree, silent on, um, the parking, which shows, uh, it looks like a existing single curb cut, um, in, you know, uh, one space, uh, existing. I assume that was just remaining as is, but, um, the proponent can clarify that.
Okay, can we hear it from the proponent?
Yep, there is an existing driveway and nothing about that driveway is changing. Um, and the rear deck, um, I think it was on the plans that we showed the first time and we had that up for discussion because we were still looking at costs. Um, and so the costs were comparable and we changed some options around for the deck, so we moved to a deck instead of a, a patio.
Is there a front deck?
Yep, and that should be on the drawing.
That is on the drawings, yep. But it's more of a, I would say it's more of an entry sequence than a front deck, but i- it, it's giving him access to the elevated first, you know, the first.
In any case, well, however we make the decision, we're making it on plans that reflect what is actually being proposed, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's, uh.
At least that's my opinion. I, I would agree with that, yep.
Well, that's why you're there, Mr. Robinson.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion, please?
So I'll make a motion to approve with BPA design review.
I will second that motion.
All right, and I'll support it as well. The motion passes.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 123426134 Mori Road. This is to remove the existing masonry stairs and replace with a wood-framed porch and stairs. The violation is Article 56, Section 8, dimensional regulations. Name and address for the record, please. Mr. Mellow, on?
Did not check in either.
Oh.
Crazy day.
Crazy day, yeah, crazy day.
Yeah, Lauren Wood is the homeowner. One second. Lauren, okay, you've been unmuted. Can you hear us?
Hi, thank you. Yes, I'm the homeowner, and I just asking permission to replace existing brick steps with patty, I'm sorry, a wood, wood porch.
Is the proposed wood porch larger than the existing masonry steps, or the same size?
Yes, no, it would, it would go out the same width and it go the length of the house.
And, and that's the current situation as well?
No, it, this is just steps that are.
Okay, so it's big.
A third of the size.
So that, is that why the, the setback issue is, is involved?
Yes, yeah, yeah. I would assume that it's, it is, I mean, it's, it's, it's kind of a triangulated lot as well, so there, it's on, you know, on a corner, so, or a so it's encroaching. It's, it's a very odd-shaped lot in terms of sort of its current state. But it's, the addition is, of the front deck is, is not pushing closer to Mori Road, but actually toward the other road, which has more space.
Okay, is, is there anybody here to speak on behalf of the proponent?
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, Jack Duggan, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, just like to go on record in support. The applicant did complete full community process and went before the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council, received their full support. And in addition, I received two support letters from Director Butters. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, we have those two support letters as well.
Mr. Chair, I have no raised hands.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
And I am in agreement, so the motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, we got to go back to two, two cases I called earlier. I would take it 15 Nottingham Street is not on. I will make a, I will call it to the record, calling BOA 108714215 Nottingham Street. It's now 613. I'll make a motion for denial without prejudice.
I'll second.
And I to him in favor, so the motion passes.
And then calling case BOA 121306818 Prescott Street. Is Prescott Street on? It's now 613. I'll make a motion for denial without prejudice.
I'll second.
And I to him in favor, the motion passes, and that brings this hearing to a close. The hearing is adjourned.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.